Good afternoon. I am convening the meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. We will be entering into closed session at this time and reconvening for open session at 6:30, but I believe one of my colleagues has an announcement at this time.
Oh, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a financial conflict of interest under Government Code Section 87100 regarding Closed Item Session E. I will not attend the closed session for Item E, will not obtain or review any non-public information regarding the governmental decision. The clerk is requested to make this announcement part of the official record of today's meeting.
And in case anyone was wondering, that was Supervisor Chucklin. Thank you for that announcement. We will now convene in closed session. Absent Supervisor Chucklin.
Are you going to do that one first?
Yes, we will take that item up first. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. We will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. We will be led this evening by the Supervisor whose district we are in tonight. Supervisor Chucklin.
Please join me in surrendering our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We are having some technical difficulties with our audio feed, but hopefully that will be taken care of and we will get live shortly. I will look over to County Council to see if there's a report out from the earlier closed session that was held at 4:00 PM.
Yes, Mr. Chair, there is a report out for Item C. The Board of Supervisors authorized the defense of individually named defendants with a reservation of rights in the case of Kyle Clark, the County of Tulare, Christopher Hifner, and Doze 1 through 50, Tulare County Superior Court Case Number VCU 281967. The adverse party is Kyle Clark, represented by Martin Gasparian. This case involves a motor vehicle accident and personal injury. The motion was made by Supervisor Dennis Townsend, seconded by Supervisor Amely Shuklin, and the motion was passed unanimously. That concludes reporting out.
Thank you, Council. I appreciate that. We will now begin with Board of Supervisors Matters, Item 2 on the agenda. Actually, it's listed as Item 1, my apologies. I'll look to my right, and Supervisor Chucklin.
So, yes, last Friday, I participated in food delivery packages with Food Link and many others, and that was a very nice thing. They do this every Friday, so if anybody's interested, I made food deliveries to the Goshen area. Yesterday, I had my first Tulare County Economic Development Corporation Administrative Board meeting, and it was just kind of an orientation for us, new ones on the admin board. Tomorrow, I am looking forward to the ribbon cutting of Fire Station 1 and also our press conference that we will be holding. That's it.
All right, thank you very much. Supervisor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, everyone, the big crowd out there tonight. So Wednesday, on the 8th, I dialed into the National COVID-19 Briefing Call for the White House Office of Intergovernmental Affairs. Really pretty informative. Had Larry Kudlow and Deborah Burks, Robert Wilkes, and Surgeon General Adams on there, among a couple of others. And given everything that's going on, it was really pretty upbeat, just projections and things. They did everything from financial to hospitals to vaccines, to anything related to COVID-19 and the economy and where we're going. And actually, it was very informative, but again, a little bit upbeat on the projections, so was happy to be on that. And then we did an Eastern Two Lee White Area Growers' Call on the 8th, those areas that aren't involved in water districts. And again, a very informative call, talking about some specific challenges for those that don't have surface water that'll be coming up under Sigma, and so still looking at what their role will be as the groups outside of water districts in the implementation comes. So they've been getting pretty creative there. And then still on water, also on the 13th, called into the Water Commission meeting. I'm an alternate for Chair Vanderpool, and so called to listen in on that. And there was a little bit of a special interest in an idea to self-fund some water infrastructure throughout the eight valley counties. And so it's in something that's sort of in its infancy, but the Commission did vote to continue to look into that. And then, as Supervisor Chucklin said, the Fire Station Number 1 opening tomorrow will be out there for that, and then the press conference afterwards with the Workforce Investment Board right here Thursday. Going to be our first Zoom Rotary Meeting over in Porterville. And then also on Thursday evening, the Porterville Exchange Club is doing an installation of officers, and they've asked me to do that, so I will be helping them with that installation. And then I can't forget that Friday is my 38th year anniversary with my lovely wife, Cece.
Wow.
So we'll be celebrating now.
I'll be 36 this year.
She deserves a medal. Yeah, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thanks, son.
I appreciate it. All right, Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yesterday, I participated in the National Association of Counties Town Hall, and last week I reported that that was going to be our annual meeting, and it's actually, the annual business meeting is next Monday. This Town Hall was focused on some of the top priorities that NACO is establishing, and there's less than 10 major priorities, and two of those are something that are really near and dear to our hearts, one being permanent funding for PILT, Payment in Lua Taxes, and SRS, Secure Rural Schools, the other being broadband service for all and specifically in rural areas. So that was good to hear. Their main priority right now is to get specific funding for COVID-related costs for all counties, recognizing it out of the 3,000-plus counties throughout the country that less than 5% actually received direct payments through the CARES Act. And so making sure that that extended to the other 95% of counties is something that's a big priority. Infrastructure also is a huge priority for NACO, and so all those things really hit on points that we've advocated for for many years. As noted, tomorrow with Fire Station 1's grand opening is going to be a phenomenal event, and I really look forward to seeing all the new gadgets and quarters that are going to be out there. It's really going to be a great day. RCRC, we're having an executive committee meeting also tomorrow, and on the, an action that we had taken at our last regular scheduled meeting and something that we'll be reviewing as far as implementation, is a program that we instituted that creates about, I think it's roughly $3 million revolving fund that will help counties that if we've received a grant and we're looking for monies to begin implementation, but we haven't actually received the funds, that Golden State Finance Authority will, and there's a specific terminology, I know Cass is in the audience, so I'm not going to say specifically what it is because I don't want to mess it up, but there's a specific terminology that essentially gives us kind of a loan up to half a million dollars, I believe, that can help get us through so we can begin the process, and we won't have delays, but recognizing that once we receive the funds, that that will then be paid back to Golden State Finance Authority. So, you know, especially with smaller counties that don't necessarily have the liquidity to be able to move forward with those anyway, that that's going to be very helpful. So that's something that we may be able to tap into for various projects as need be. Also, tomorrow is going to be a for NACO California Caucus meeting, so it will be various supervisors and staff from California counties discussing issues of significance. Whether it's issues of significance, I know last year we talked about specifically the second vice presidential candidates. This year, there's only one candidate that's seeking the second vice presidency of NACO. She's a part of a county that's a suburb of Chicago, and we had the opportunity to hear her state some of the things that she was interested in, and overall, you know, didn't sound like there was anything bad or anything that raised any concerns. This Thursday, there will be a NACO Western Region Caucus Call, which will be similar to California but for western states. Friday is a SJVIA meeting that will be either, it's in-person in Fresno, or I believe there's call-in options, and we'll be looking at insurance rates for upcoming year, and I hope next year that we will be able to have some good news on that front for our employees, for many of our employees. And then, as I stated earlier, next Monday will be the NACO Annual Business Meeting, where we will vote on the actual policy resolutions and the one and only second vice presidential candidate. Thank you.
All right, Supervisor Valero.
Good evening, Tulare County, and I have a few announcements to make, but will share that it has been a busy few days fielding questions and connecting the dots on various constituent requests and inquiries. Today was actually, we had a lot of those this morning and afternoon. I want to thank our staff at the Board of Supervisors, along with Health and Human Services and Resource Management Agency for working on these items and doing so with attention and detail. It is much appreciated. I also want to draw your attention now to the screen, because at yesterday's Law Library Committee, we received an update on the Law Library activities and the recent renovation project. So if you can, yes, all right. So as Mel puts it up, as you can see, there are before and after of the renovation, the information area, the computer lab section area, which has now been renovated, as well as seating area for those that go to utilize the space. And then what others have been requesting is some type of space where attorneys, as well as others, can give small workshops, so that has also been added to the library. And again, a space that welcomes the opportunity for the public to come in and participate, however, not at this time, obviously, due to COVID-19, but this was a great opportunity in the meantime to really renovate the space. And so it's definitely an upgrade from what it looked like previously, and so the new multi-use space will also serve for small classes and group sessions, an item that attorneys and other court personnel have been requesting. And then, as mentioned in the meeting, at this time, the Law Library is in good financial standing, and we tabled the reopening of the Law Library due to increased closures in the Governor's Order this week. And also, a huge shout-out to the GSA, General Services Agency, for the lead on the upgrade project. So thank you, Mel, also for providing that. And then yesterday's King's Tulare Area Agency on Aging Board Meeting continues to show our investment in our aging population via resources and support to local organizations on the front lines, especially during this time. The most significant of this meeting was the approval of grant award contracts so that organizations can continue to meet the needs and stand in the gap. These grants include Older American Grant for 2.5 million, Senior Community Service and Employment Training Program for 91,000, the Multi-Purpose Senior Services Program for 873,000, Health Insurance Counseling and Advocacy Program for 270,000, and the acceptance of other grants made possible through the CARES Act, should that be approved tonight, for 1.7 million. And so KT AAA continues to partner with amazing organizations like King's County Commission on Aging, the City of Tulare, CSSET, United Way, among other entities. And then, as many of you know, the Yerem Civil Project is well underway, and we've discussed this in previous meetings already. I'm now entering Phase 2. This has been a huge endeavor on behalf of the county to provide clean drinking water for its residents. Unfortunately, there are several residents who are hesitant still about drinking the water due to both communities' long-term history and experience. Therefore, we will be holding a safe drinking water campaign to promote water safety and allow members of the community, as well as elected and state officials, to participate so they could, so that they are able to drink the water in the community and show their awareness. And then I just want to do a shout-out to CSSET, because I know CSSET has been working in the trenches in our community, especially during this time when people may have lost their jobs or need to get connected to some type of employment opportunity. So CSSET's Back to Work Program has available positions, and they are hiring individuals that are willing to do physical labor, and partnering with Caltrans, doing litter abatement and landscaping on the freeways. And obviously, veterans will have priority in this enrollment, so thank you so much for providing that opportunity. And then in addition to that, another division within CSSET, the Sequoia Community Corps, is recruiting for its Public Works Urban Forestry and Energy Services Program. And so being able to go out and work on sidewalks and other projects that maybe the county can't necessarily do, but CSSET has a program that can fill that gap, and so encouraging those who are listening in that those opportunities are available. And so with that, I'm also looking forward to tomorrow's Fire Station Grand Opening, as well as the press conference to support our small businesses and other entities, and the support that the WIB will provide during this time as well. That is all.
All right, thank you, Supervisor. A few things I wanted to go over. Yesterday, we had a meeting of the Greater Quea Groundwater Sustainability Agency. I thought the meeting went very well. One of the things that is a consequence of the COVID-19 pandemic is the postponement of, the reimbursement of various GSAs from various landowners that are benefiting from the work that they've done, and kind of the postponement of the county being repaid for its investment on behalf of those landowners that we are serving. So that is yet to come, and I know other GSAs are dealing with the same issues and difficulties, but hopefully we'll get some clearance and start seeing some of that money returned to the county. We had a Water Commission meeting yesterday. Thank you Supervisor Townsend for your recap. I thought Tommy Esquivel from Fresno State did a great job in his presentation, discussing the San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Financing Plan. I think that that is a regional effort that all partake in to potentially benefit the water infrastructure that we all rely upon, not just leaning on one sector of our society to bear that burden. So it'll be interesting to see where that effort goes. Tomorrow, we have the Station 1 ribbon cutting at 9:00 at the new Station 1 location, which is just south of Avenue 256 and Road 140 on the southeast corner. Look forward to that, and I know the fire chief is very excited, as are the firefighters that will get to be stationed there. It's a state-of-the-art facility, and I look forward to the tour and the great presentation that will follow. Tomorrow, we have the press conference discussing an item that we will be finalizing tonight, so I think that will be very appropriate, and the assistance to businesses that have been left out of any resource during this COVID-19 pandemic is going to be very welcomed. And then lastly, Supervisor Crocker mentioned the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority meeting that will take place Friday at 9:00. We will be reviewing the preliminary rates, and as of now, the numbers appear something that are very palatable for our members, but again, they're only preliminary, and we will find out the final as we have an additional meeting, I believe it's in August, August or September, to get the actual renewal numbers. But that is all that I have. I appreciate your indulgence during this Board of Supervisors Matter portion. We will now move on to Item 2, which is a request to receive an update from the Health and Human Services Agency on the COVID-19 Status and Response Efforts in Tulare County. Mr. Lutz.
Good morning, or morning, afternoon. Wow.
Good afternoon, good evening, whatever you'd like to call it.
The nighttime board meetings got my script down, and apparently need to update it. Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, CAO and Council. Tim Lutz, Health and Human Services Agency Director, here for the weekly update on county's COVID response and key changes. So we continue to have had a busy week. The last few weeks have been continuously in our uptick in cases, case levels today, 6,209, which is up from 5,175 last week, which is a 19.98% increase. Unfortunately, we also are at 153 deaths, which is an additional 14 deaths over last week. Our recoveries, 3,749, and our self-quarantine number is reflecting at 251 cases. I will note that's a large change from where we were reporting. When we switched over to the state system, there were some lags on clearing out some old data that was still carrying forward. And also, I would note that despite that carryover and that reconciliation and cleanup, that number is still low, and it's low because it reflects just not getting as much information and cooperation from people when we're doing contact tracing. So I think it is reflective of the cleanup, but also where we're just still not getting a lot of good detail on contact tracing. So when I look at our weekly trends, fortunately, and I, you know, didn't think I'd be saying fortunately about a 933 cumulative cases in a week, but fortunately, it did show a decrease on our cumulative cases over the prior week, which we were at 1137. So that was about a 17.9% decrease over the prior week's, week-by-week numbers. I would like to hope that that's an optimistic number, but I do have some concerns or questions, primarily because our testing has been down, given the commercial lab testing constraints. So it's not entirely clear whether that decrease is reflecting reduced overall cases or just a reduction in testing as a result of the bottlenecks with our commercial laboratories. The new case rate did continue to show an upward trend, increasing by 12%. We, last week, we were at 381.7 per 100,000. Today, we were 427.7 per 100,000, again continually showing that upward increase. Also, on our testing positivity, I mentioned last week some of the adjustments that happened with the lag in getting negative tests being input in the system. Over a period of a week or two, we start to see the positivity go down a little bit, so we're referring to it as kind of the adjusted positivity and the preliminary positivity. Interestingly, the positivity last week, I think, was 14.2. The adjusted right now is at 13.9. I think it will still adjust a little more down, but I do think that's certainly a higher and concerning number on our positivity. Our preliminary this week was 13.6. Again, I would expect that to trend downward a little bit as the remaining negative tests get entered into the system. The R effective changed, this time increased a little bit from 1.05 to 1.09, again reflecting that cases will likely continue to occur or happen at the rate they are now with some On our hospitalizations, so unfortunate, last week, we kind of saw stabilization, hoping that that trend was going to stay. Over the weekend, we started to see an uptick again, and moved up to 86 hospitalizations for COVID-positive, which is up 10% from the prior week. And our hope was, again, with capacity, being able to manage transferring to the Porterville Alternative Care Site, we would start to see a little more capacity in our hospitals, but the hospitals are still reporting they're at or near capacity with fewer than 10% of the beds remaining open. In fact, right now, the state was doing a surge capacity call with local health jurisdictions to kind of talk about some preliminary trending and reporting and response, so I expect, hopefully, next week to have some more information for the Board. A nice thing, Quea Delta was able to establish a contract with the feds through the state that's going to deploy a team of 20 medical workers that will serve Quea Delta. Adventist Health in Hanford, I believe, also benefited from the contracts. That'll allow Quea to open up 20 previously unstaffed ICU beds. And then based on our modeling, we do continue to show hospitals on an upward trending trajectory, some far more than others in terms of where hospitalizations could be, and a lot depends on case spread and containment. So the big item from yesterday, the state did put out additional orders for all counties in the state, having to close indoor operations for dining and restaurants, wineries, tasting rooms, movie theaters, family entertainment centers, card rooms, museums, zoos. The list that we had the prior week, the state now expanded to all of the state. They also ordered bars, brew pubs, breweries and pubs to close all operations regardless of indoor or outdoor. And then for those counties that are on the targeted engagement list for three days, the state also shut down indoor operations for fitness centers, worship services, protests, offices for nonessential sectors, personnel care services like nail salons, body waxing, tattoo parlors, barber shops, hair salons, and then also malls. I know we've gotten a lot of questions on our side for allowable types of activities on those essential offices, and we're referring back to what the state's Original Essential Services Guidance indicates in terms of the 13 key industries, health and public health sector, emergency services sector, food and agriculture, energy, waste and wastewater, transportation and logistics, communication and IT, government operations and other community-based essential functions, critical manufacturing, financial services, chemical sector, defense industrial base, and industrial, commercial, residential, and sheltering facilities. So realistically, any offices that support those operations would still be allowed to continue to operate as they have been. If they don't fall in that category, then the state was ordering those to be closed again or staffed working from home. And then I mentioned Porterville Adult, Porterville Alternative Care Site a little while ago. I just wanted to mention our census at this point. We have 15 patients, this was as of yesterday. 13 of those are from Tulare County. Two of those are from Kern County. We're continuing to work with the operator at that facility to get consistent and accurate reporting. It's been a little slow, a little sporadic. We know typically what Tulare County sends over. We don't always know what other counties might be sending. At this point, as far as we know, just two from Kern County. And then in terms of remdesivir, we have been working with the hospital pharmacists on the purchase program for hospitals, recognizing that when those allocations end, hospitals will have to be picking up that cost. So what we're looking at is utilizing some of the healthcare sector CARES Act funding to continue to support the purchase of the remdesivir allocations. The hospitals have been dividing it 70/30 between Quea Delta and Sierra View. This was an internally agreed-upon percentage split. Now, I'm happy to report that Adventist Health is actually going to begin taking COVID-positive patients. And so when they start to do that, I'm guessing that we'll start to see that allocation split even more to encompass those Tulare patients. Right now, it sounds like they're going to be a little more of the lower acuity COVID positives, but that could significantly help on some of the discharging from hospitals that are heavily impacted to Tulare Adventist. And then our inventory for remdesivir is, this point, Sierra View's completed 47 treatments. They have actively receiving and currently on hand 28. And then Quea Delta completed 101. People actively receiving is 16, and currently on hand is 39. And then moving on to a little bit about some of that outreach for businesses. First of all, our internal operations team has been working closely with the chambers and the business community to try and provide education and support where possible. We're actively developing a training that we're working with the chambers on to educate businesses on contact tracing, provide support for a number of businesses have asked to be able to do some of their own internal tracing when they have positives rather than have our team do it. So what we want to do is provide the right tools to help them be able to do that successfully. And then also on businesses, the state enforcement team, we know, has been active in the county. Frustratingly, we're still trying to get updated lists. I read in Fresno Bee about some enforcement actions that we hadn't gotten a list from the state. So that's a little frustrating. I will say, though, we did get some activities from labor commissioners and Cal OSHA list, and they actually had been probably about two dozen different businesses that they visited beyond just bars and restaurants. Notable, it looks like they visited about 81 grocery stores within the county over the Fourth of July weekend. And then, again, just continuing to try and shift some of our operations, reflecting increased activity across the county in healthcare facilities, public safety, and essential services. We're repositioning some of our nurse resources, kind of back to where we started, in a way, with staffing up these liaison-type of positions that work specifically with an industry or sector and can provide enhanced services and support. And then I would like to note, we haven't talked about logistics and PPE for a while. I think this is an important piece where we have secured a 30-day stockpile of PPE. That's for the hospitals and clinics that are doing COVID-19 testing, essential businesses and skilled nursing facilities. Our goal here, again, 30-day supply. If things become backlog again, we want to be able to get those to our essential workers. Through this incident, we've received over 1.66 million masks. We've requested 1.92 million, and hopefully we'll be receiving the rest of those allotments that we requested, but it's a pretty impressive number when you look at 1.6 million masks. And then the approximate cost to date, $2.9 million for incident-related costs. And then the last item, 102 individuals are being housed with Project Room Key. One is positive, the other is awaiting test results. Otherwise, that program continues to be a successful program that has seen good outcomes.
Thanks for the presentation, Tim. I know that we have some requests for questions or comments. One thing I wanted to ask before I forgot, I've been getting numerous requests from constituents inquiring about youth sports. I know that Kings County Office of Public Health sent out a letter notifying the leagues, the parents, et cetera, that there would be no team activities following CDPH, California Department of Public Health, guidelines. I'm just wondering if Tulare County is going to be giving such guidelines to our various organizations and leagues within the county and schools even, too, as they prepare for upcoming sport seasons?
I think that's an excellent question. We, in fact, interestingly, 5:00, I was on a statewide call discussing just that on youth sports. We were preparing a letter to go out that would basically reflect similar to what Kings County did, what's allowable under the state guidelines. What we're hearing is Thursday, we might get some updated guidance that clarifies which youth sports would be allowable. So we're prepping. Our guidance will probably hold until Thursday, just to see if that comes out, so we don't create confusion. But I do recognize, I know we've been getting a number of calls on that very question. It's an important question that I know a lot of parents and team players are asking, and we want to make sure we can get that out there.
Thank you. All right. I'll move on to some questions and comments from my colleagues. Supervisor Valero?
Thank you for that question, Chairman. My question would be, is, do you foresee any changes to our daily COVID reporting that account for accuracy and to stay on top of the numbers, numbers that are coming in higher amounts than usual at the start of this pandemic? So that is, do you think we should follow what Fresno County is doing in terms of their direction in disseminated COVID information two days per week, given the uptick and given kind of the wealth of information? Or will we continue to see high-quality data being published on our dashboard even in spite of a great amount of testing, information, and other constraints?
So that's a question that I know internally, our teams have been batting around. I think it's important to have that frequency as high as possible to provide information. Some information's more easily reportable, some's a little more challenging, and that we rely on contact tracers to be able to glean. So we are revamping some of our dashboards, reflecting some of the questions that we're getting or areas that we can provide better clarification for. I know, just in speaking with our team and knowing how much work and effort goes into it, our team is comfortable with what we put out, but recognizing that sometimes we don't know certain information, and we'll try and flag it as such. We get a number of requests on things that we just don't have. I do think as time evolves, we're getting better information in certain areas. One of the biggest is the types of congregate settings or group types of activities that people are actually getting the infections at. The state system initially that we were relying on was frankly not designed for a pandemic, and I think it held up as well as it could. The state's slowly been phasing over to their new system. It's much more robust in terms of the information it's collecting and therefore what we can easily report out. But part of it's now going back and doing some data cleanup on some of the older information, recognizing that when things started, everybody was scrambling to do the contact tracing, get the information in the system as quickly as possible. So I do think our data frequency will continue on the daily report outs during the week. Some things like our, the case rate, the positivity especially, are ones that are manual calculations and that really are updated on a maybe twice-a-week basis. But we are definitely revamping some of our dashboards to continue to provide as much real-time or close-to-information as we can.
All right. Yeah, because also, and thank you for that. And I think the root of that question also stems from, or adding to, which is, does your staff feel overwhelmed with all the information that is coming in? And would it be wise to kind of separate that kind of reporting out, given the heavy weight that has been coming in with the numbers and such? So that's where I was getting at as well.
Our epidemiological folks are amazing. They're kind of the quiet group behind the scenes that is cranking out a lot of this information, and I do know they are stretched pretty thin. We try and have a lot of those conversations about what makes sense, what can we do, and how can we help automate as much as we possibly can for getting this information out.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Shuckley?
Thank you, Tim. I noticed in your report, you do have a chart that lists the deaths by age categories. That's a question I'm getting from a lot of people. Is that something that's now, will be added to the dashboard?
Yes. That was one of those pieces that I think we get a lot of questions for. I think it's important information. That's also one that I think right now has been a manual calculation, but our hope is with some of the new reporting to be able to have that more automatic.
Yeah, I agree. I think it would be good to report. I just hope that people don't think, well, there haven't been any deaths in the 18 to 25 range, so I'm safe. But yeah, I think it would be important to list that. Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Townsend?
Thank you. Tim, I'm just looking at your report on page nine with the three spreadsheets of all the patients tested at our lab, the OptumServe, and the portable collection. Whenever we listed those Tulare County residents and then non-Tulare County residents, do only the Tulare County residents get counted on our count, or does everybody that's tested in Tulare County get included on our count?
Only Tulare County residents would get counted on our number. So like in Porterville, we do have a number of Kern residents that come up. We get quite a few Fresno residents and Dinuba. Those do go to the respecting county, or respective county, I should say.
Thanks.
Okay. And I think that wraps up our questions and comments. The comment I will finish with is just, you know, again, thank you for your perseverance and for the good work of your public health staff and really everyone in HHSA. They're working really hard right now and putting forth extra effort, and it is to be commended and recognized. This is not anything that's going to be ending anytime soon. And to think that it was going above and beyond for, you know, a few months, a few months has turned into, you know, four months now, and it's looking like it's going to be several more months. So try to encourage and everyone to stay positive, but their great work is to be recognized and do know that they're appreciated for all their extra time and effort during these difficult times, so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Tim. Okay. Next item on our agenda is moving on to item three, which is public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment that is before this board regarding any item that is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors but not on today's agenda. Public comment, cannon will be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone here in the board chambers wishing to speak during public comment? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have phone comment at this time?
We do not.
Okay. Thank you very much. I will now close the public comment period and move on to our consent calendar. Items four through 12, are there any items that board members or members of the public would like to have pulled for separate comment or consideration? Seeing none. Chair will entertain a motion. I have a motion from Supervisor Shuckley and a second by Supervisor Valero. Motion passes 5-0 unanimously. We will now move on to our untimed portion of our meeting this evening. Take up item 13. That is a request from the County Administrative Office to approve the County of Tulare CARES Act funding plan for initial usage of the $49,938,000 of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act funds due to the coronavirus disease. Mr. CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Jason Britt, CAO. It's my pleasure today to present to you, to this Board, a broad spending plan for the $48.9 million CARES Act funding Tulare County is scheduled to receive. The plan presented before you tonight follows the federal requirements, all the federal requirements for the appropriate use of the funding. I also like to acknowledge Adam Peck, who is also here, and he will help me later in the presentation when we talk about small business assistance. So just a brief history, my clicker's not working. Make sure it's on. That's on. Not clicking, so, anyway. Next slide, thank you. Now I have a human clicker. Thanks, Hillary. So on March 27, 2020, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, known as the CARES Act, was signed into law. It established an appropriated money to the fund. Tulare County was allocated approximately $48.9 million within the state's inactive budget this year. And on July 7, your Board authorized the CAO to sign and submit the certification for receipt of funds from the California Department of Finance and realignment backfill funding revenues. Next slide. So just briefly, want to touch again on the county's certification. The county's certification will follow the proposed use of the funds as directed under the Control Section 1190 of the Budget Act of 2020, and those are essentially any necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency respect to COVID-19. Were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March 27, 2020, and were incurred during the period that begins on March 1, 2020 and ends on December 30, 2020. Additionally, the county is required to agree to following conditions. Adhere to federal guidance and the state's stay-at-home orders and other health requirements as directed in the gubernatorial executive N3320 and any subsequent executive orders, statutes, public health orders, directives, and guidance. The report on expenditures and any regional collaboration and non-duplication of efforts within the region by September 1, 2020, and to return any unspent funds by October 30, 2020, and to, of course, repay the state for any costs disallowed after federal review. So these funds do fall under our normal federal single audit rules, and so there is always a risk to disallowances for those federal funds. Also, just some newer information that has come out since last week's meeting when we talked about the certification forms. The state is now saying that these certification forms have to be done on a monthly basis to certify, and that essentially there are three elements to following the complying with the orders. One is meeting the contact tracing staffing level required for the county variants and meeting the currently required commitment to actively participate in the state's data monitoring program and undertaking any efforts advised by the state for those counties that are on the data monitoring list, also referred to sometimes as the watch list. Number three, and also not adopting any resolutions, ordinances, or taking any actions that are inconsistent with the state's stay-at-home order, and including if the sheriff publicly doesn't want to enforce the plans, how that we can work around that. And I also just want to remind the Board that this exact same certification also holds true for the state general funded realignment backfill dollars of $750 million that we're scheduled to receive as well.
But not $750 million to Tulare County?
No, no. I mean, yes, statewide. So it's about, I think, $9 million to us, if I remember the words. Next slide. So we put together a broad funding plan that we have, I just want to say upfront, that we have a very limited time to spend these funds. The funds must be spent by the end of December. There can be no rollover or carryover. The funds cannot be obligated, they have to be spent. They have to be spent. So that gives us, and we're scheduled to receive our first payment somewhere around the last week of July, the first week of August. So that gives us roughly a few months to spend this money. Some of this can also go to reimbursement for some of the costs we've already incurred. But because there is a very, very short timeline to spend and to also maintain the record-keeping and reporting that is required for federal funds, I am recommending a very broad plan and flexible plan so that we can try to maximize the use of these funds. It's not, it's not every day that we have, you know, this amount of federal funds coming to our county without some type of match or obligation. So we want to be able to maximize those funds and also assist the community and the county in our response efforts. Next slide. So we kind of brought, we kind of broke it into three broad categories. Really, it's proposed government support and also community support, and then a contingency. So we're sort of, we're proposing $29.8 million to be part of the local government support. And this also includes, you know, we've already, as you heard Tim earlier in his report, talk about already incurring almost $3 million in response cost at the agency. IT also reports that we've already spent around $4 million for our IT infrastructure, for teleworking. And we are still trying to gather other costs to really fully understand how much we've actually expended in the response to the COVID-19 response. IT, GSA, and HSA are the three departments where we're centralizing this money. HSA will primarily be tasked with the mobile testing and contact tracing. GSA will be responsible for central ordering of PPE, sanitation, face masks, disinfectants, all those kinds of things that we use to sanitize public areas and work surfaces and work areas. And there also may be additional costs associated with having to pay overtime to our custodial staff or outside vendors to sanitize offices when employees test positive. So again, we've outlined salary and benefits, retrofitting county facilities. And what that means is essentially trying to go touchless for as many things we can go touchless for. Doors, bathroom fixtures, water sinks, maybe water fountains. So GSA is undertaking that assessment as we speak. Also, telework upgrading. You know, we had to send a lot of people home to telework, and we've already invested a lot of money in that. We're also looking at, you know, the potential of having to send more people home for telework as this, as our offices get impacted by positive employees. Also, mobile COVID-19 testing, and then just overall expanding our testing capabilities and contact tracing. And then, of course, there's the other sort of category. This is a very fast-moving target. You know, two weeks ago, we're in one spot. Now we're in a different spot. And so we just want to retain a little bit of flexibility to try to react to that. Next slide, please. So on top of that, we're proposing a $14 million. Can you go back one? Thank you. A $14.1 million community investment. That's made up of small business support, which we'll talk about a little bit later in detail. Healthcare support, rent utility assistance, food assistance, homeless housing, some Chamber of Commerce educational support to help engage our business community, and to upgrade and rehabilitate parks, to do some of the similar things we talked about for county facilities. Where it makes sense or possible, do we, you know, do we do touchless restrooms, you know? Do we need to do those types of things in our museum? There's just a number of other areas to be compliant with, with the COVID-19 industry guidance for the county. And then we also are, you know, proposing a $5 million contingency. Really, this is for unforeseen expenditures or impacts that are not previously mentioned in some of these broad categories, and also for things that may change as we are, you know. We've really been in this space really since the middle of March. So, you know, things have changed a lot in just three to four months. And so another three to four months, they may change even more. So that flexibility is important. So moving on to talking about the business assistance program a little bit. So when we were contemplating putting together this spending plan, we had looked to other counties and cities and other jurisdictions who were doing sort of small, local, small business grants to help small businesses that have been affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. And so we put together a program with Adam's assistance to sort of lay out what we think is some assistance to about 1,000 businesses throughout the county. And we are proposing that this program be $5 million, essentially a million dollars per supervisory district, that it be 10 or fewer, it'll be for-profit businesses physically located and operating in Tulare County, 10 or fewer full-time equivalent employees, two full years of operation prior to March 19. No unpaid or delinquent property tax. And the business applicant will not be eligible to apply if they have received other federal funding, for example, such as the paycheck protection program. The idea would be to award $5,000 per small business, $1 million per supervisory district, so essentially 200 businesses per district. If 200 eligible applications were not received in each district, we would split the remaining eligible slots amongst the remaining supervisory districts that were available. And if there were more than 200 eligible applicants per supervisory district, then we would select them by a lottery. So at this time, I'd like to invite Adam Peck up from our Workforce Investment Board Director to kind of talk a little bit about his experience in a similar program that the WIB has had that they administer, which puts them in a good spot to administer this program. Also, some ideas about what he thinks they'll be doing in terms of engaging the businesses. And so I'll kind of turn it over to Adam and take it from there, and we can kind of...
All right. Thank you. And thanks, Chairman, Supervisors. I don't want to touch things, Amy. CAO and Council.
You can raise up the podium, but you have to touch the button to get it to go up there.
That's very fancy. I never knew that. That's good. I appreciate Jason reaching out to me on this and Supervisors bringing up an opportunity for the WIB to be involved. You know, from the beginning of this pandemic, as soon as there were any business impacts, the WIB began getting together with all the chambers in our county, all the city economic development folks, Small Business Development Corporation, a number of partners to try to just get the same thing that you guys do individually for each of your districts, get a handle on what businesses are being asked to do and try to get them answers when often those answers aren't there. And so we think we have a great network in place to be able to leverage, to get the word out, and seek to get help for. And I appreciate this conversation tonight because it helps us figure out how to best target it, too. In our minds, as we began to think about this and talked to Jason and his staff, and I appreciate Katrina and Justin from CAO's office, they've been really outstanding in this, we really see this as helping the small businesses that you and I and all of us deal with on a daily basis that they almost get frustrated at the idea that there is help because they've been told that so many times, and it's so much more complicated and doesn't quite fit their situation, and those real small, they don't have a CFO to call in and figure it out. They don't have an HR director to figure out this new lead. They don't have someone to figure that out, and that's who hasn't taken advantage of opportunities that may have been available to them, and that if you folks see eye to eye, that this investment could be targeted at those folks and done in as simple a manner as possible with the, you know, the right standards in place to make sure it's going to the right folks. But I think an investment like this, spread throughout the county, could make a big difference. And I think we can get there. I think the chambers have been out there talking to the businesses, all these small businesses. We have good ideas and interested in hearing more from you about how we get to each of those businesses. We anticipate doing it, having an August 1 application launch date with a two-week application period that closes, and then we evaluate the applications and the distribution around the county to then make those funding decisions, enter agreements with those folks, those businesses selected within the next two weeks. Give them an additional month to spend that money or justify expenses based upon prior expenses that would be allowed, and have it all wrapped up during this tight timeframe. As has been mentioned, it looks to, people have to show that they did have, or they have to at least attest that they had, they were impacted by this pandemic, in which there are plenty of businesses that have been, that they, that it goes to expenses, rent, utilities, or the related expenses to adjusting to the pandemic, PPE and personal spacing kind of equipment. And that we then, we don't, and that we do a singular kind of payment to those folks at that $5,000 level. And then, and if they, if they for some reason don't have the expenses related to it, that then they have an obligation to return that unspent money during that period of time so that the county could still make adjustments. We're communicating with the cities so that if the cities are thinking about doing something, that they coordinate with us. So I've had conversations with Visele that if they wanted to consider doing something, maybe they see if they have more applicants than could be funded, and then they can just come in and instead of running their own program, just scrape the applicants that haven't been funded. So we're trying to do that kind of coordination so that we're not having competing granting efforts going on at the same time. So in a nutshell, that's the kind of thoughts. There are some granular things that we're not going to be able to figure out here tonight, but it gets, you know, when you say, how many businesses are in Tulare County? It's a harder question to answer than you think because people can be self-employed or not even self-employed, they're just getting $1090 income and what, you know. So we're really trying to get down to that granular level and figure out what, who the intent, if you have a salon that then, whether they should or not lease out booths to folks in that salon, are those four different businesses in that? Is that one business? And then people that are just, you know, those are the type of things we're trying to sort through and think about how you ask people and what the right way to look at it is. But 0 to 10 employees captures a, around 70% from all the data I look up, of the number of employers in our county. If you go up to 25, you capture about another 15% of the employers, the businesses. And even though a few big employers employ a whole lot of people, those, there are a lot that employ one, two, or three people, you know, a whole lot that fit that. So it's, there are a lot of details to figure out, but we're excited to hear input. We're excited about the consideration of investment and trusting the WIB to kind of get the word out there and have an effective portal that's easy to apply, that's available in English and Spanish, and that we reach out to the small communities who don't get touched by, you know, folks as often. We have plans put in place for all that and plans for each of you to help us get that word out there. So happy to answer any questions.
So maybe before we go on, I know there are a few issues and some flexibility here at this specific point in the presentation. Maybe if we want to have some conversation with Adam about this program, provide suggestions or input, that would be appropriate. I see that there's some interest. Supervisor Shuckley.
Hi, thanks, Adam. You know, I think the personal care services have been hit a lot, stylists and whatnot. So if somebody was an independent stylist who rented a booth in a larger shop, would they be eligible for this?
Yeah, that is the kind of thing that we need to figure out. So we would, again, these are just decisions to be made. And there might be some checking with what's allowable, but a lot of them are just decision to be made of where the focus is. We think that it should be, let's use realtors, real estate agents as an example. There are people that are real estate agents, obviously, and they may have been affected or not. But then there are some people that are, that have a full-time job, that then have a real estate license that they use when their cousin wants to sell their house. So it may be something we say, a business from which you derive the majority of your income, or something that gets to the fact that this isn't someone who has a contractor's license but has a full-time gig, or has a side hustle. This is their main source of income, is what we thought about as a way to get down to it. But that's what we're looking for feedback on.
And could it be less than $5,000? Say it is an independent person like that salon, and, you know, they've had to pay rent over the last three months, but it's, you know, $3,000. Can they apply for a certain amount?
I, that is one area where I would suggest a kind of a universal way we apply it because I think it would, we've done a very small version of this with some funding that we received along with Kings County for 72 businesses. And we did that to make the money stretch further. And it ended up being a pretty big mess because you don't, you're always having to then allocate, okay, then where are we at with our amount of funding available and where is that? Our hope is that with $5,000 and being able to include rent and utilities, and look at the look-back period, that you would, that for most people would be a drop in the bucket from what they've been impacted. We did it to stretch the dollars, and I'm sure that's a reason to consider it, to stretch the dollars. But I think, given the period of time they can look back and the expansion, in our other grant, we couldn't allow them to include rent utilities. Well, that opens up a lot as soon as you say rent utilities included. So I would suggest a single amount, and then say what they have to spend it on, and if they don't spend it for that amount, then we have a recovery process for that. Just to simplify, that we're sending out, we're entering, accepting applications, entering agreements, and sending out checks for all the same amount.
Full amount, okay.
And we're trying to do all this in a whole different environment where you don't, we're doing, looking at an entire, where they don't have to bring us any paperwork, they don't have, we don't have to pass pieces of paper around to sign, where we think we have a process that we are in the midst of working out to have live by August 1 that will, that will allow us to do this all virtually, but give us everything we need at the same time.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few questions and then some comments. There's primarily, we're looking at three different numbers. One, the $5 million overall funding for this program, the $5,000 limit or grant amount, whatever we want to call it, as far as how people receive, and then the 10 employees or less. So for each of those different numbers, how did we arrive that those numbers were good numbers, that this is a number that we want to recommend?
That's probably for both of us to answer. The $5 million, I have nothing to do with.
It's all Jason's stuff, okay.
The $5,000, we landed on that, a lot of it is looking at what others have done and looking at, you know, we've looked specifically at Fresno and Stan Slough and Kern, and looking at what dollar amount, everything's arbitrary to some degree because you're picking, you're picking a dollar amount, you're picking number of employees. And those, I think, can be looked at differently. And there isn't much complexity added if you said 3,000 or 7,000, or, you know, 15 or fewer, 20 or fewer. We can live with a number. It is full-time equivalent that's put on here, and do people calculate employees in that way? I don't know. But I think there's reason for the board to arrive at a different number because it is, it is trying to figure out, how do you, how do you target those who largely haven't been helped while also helping as many as you can in the most effective way possible? It's just a balance of that, and there are different reasons to land at different balances.
Supervisor, just to answer your question. So the $5 million, there's a number of reasons we, you know, as...
we, you know, as Adam mentioned, we sort of looked at what others are doing. There's also, you know, can you, you know, reasonably, you know, spend that amount of money and get it out? Because the one thing we don't, we don't really want to do is have people give us money back, because then we don't have time to re-spend that money, and it will likely be lost by the time we, you know, work with the business and get the check back and go through our, you know, check cashing processes and get it deposited back in the special revenue fund, and I'm getting technical, but that just takes a lot of effort, particularly in the touchless environment we're in today. So that was one of the reasons, is we want to fully expend this money. 10 or fewer was arrived at, again, looking at similar counties, and there's a lot of thinking between counties, there's also been some research recently put together where business, small businesses with 10 or fewer employees tend to not be able to access some of the larger federal programs because of a number of reasons. One, as Adam pointed out earlier, they're too busy running their business to track paycheck protection and try to calculate their payroll and times whatever, and how many jobs I have to retain to get forgiven, and the complexity for these really small businesses can very get very, and then people kind of like give up. And so there's been, there's a lot of thinking and talking with the workforce investment department, and talking with some of the chambers, with looking at what Fresno has done and some other counties, that, that seemed to be the area where we're, you know, where maybe they didn't have as much access to some of the aid that other larger businesses did. And then again, the $5,000 was really just an arbitrary number to say, we really want people to spend that money, and we felt like, you know, most businesses, if they pay rent, probably between March and September could spend that, because getting that money back to re-spend would, would be difficult.
I appreciate that. So I guess the comments would be, is that I, I think it's, I couldn't agree more, that I think it's really critical that businesses spend the money and we want to get all this money out. My bigger question is, and comment is, I don't know that it's enough. I mean, I, you know, we're looking at $49 million, and, you know, is $5 million a sufficient amount? And is $5,000 a sufficient amount? And, you know, do we, you mentioned that 95% roughly of all employers in the county are 25 or less. So what would, you know, if we increase that, now we're increasing the ability for other, for other employee, you know, businesses to be able to access some of those funds, recognizing that a business still that has 18, 22, 24, 25 employees is still a small business. I mean, it's not, I don't think large by any means, you know, when some numbers look at 500 employees or less are considered small businesses, these are truly small businesses. So, but I, I also recognize, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, having a set dollar amount as far as, is a lot, is much easier to process, timing is of the essence for these. We're looking at a short window, I mean, two weeks is a very short window to receive all applications in for this. So, I mean, I, you know, I would like to, I would like us to be able to look at, again, how do we provide some flexibility, but, and I appreciate the, Jason, your comment about having a flexible plan, so being able to stick along with that lines and be flexible, you know, to see if we can have, give some authority to the CAO and, and to Adam, and, you know, look at some, you know, if there, if, if applications aren't tracking the first week, you know, the second week, does that trigger, you know, increasing the employee threshold so that, you know, a second wave, recognizing that the, the smaller businesses maybe have a priority over the, over the larger ones. And as well as then, you know, knowing that we have a contingency fund, how, you know, if there's a huge, you know, a huge demand for this, you know, looking at having, giving authority to, you know, increase that $5 million amount to a larger amount, depending on, you know, what the demand for is in the community, because I know one of the, one of the comments, or one of the requirements is that they can't have utilized any other type of program, so the, the pay tech protection program, I don't know, the economic injury, disaster loans, if that's also a program that they couldn't have qualified for. So if those types of things, you know, that may take out, I don't, I don't know how many businesses, but that may take out a significant amount of businesses that have accessed those already, so, and again, I think the, from, from my standpoint, the main driver is to get the dollars out. We know that there's plenty of hurting businesses, and so just making sure that we can get out as much as possible to try and help them out. So those, and then I think the last comment as well, and I didn't see this specifically, but just allowing for nonprofits to be eligible to apply to. I think that there's been some impacts, and I, you know, I don't know that this, you know, makes or breaks anything, but I think it helps, and it goes for small budgets, and we've got a few of them out and about that's still trying to provide services to our communities.
And right now, this has been written up as for-profit, but we knew that that was an issue that, that the board would want to weigh in and, and make a, make a call along possibly.
Sure. Supervisor Townsend.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Adam, and Jason, putting this together, and it's, yeah, I echo that, that it's a great, great job put together, obviously pretty quickly too, had to do, and we're going to have to do it now quickly. I'm kind of piggybacking on what Vice Chair Chucklin and Supervisor Crocker were both mentioning, but I also had the thought about the independent contractors, you know, and you mentioned it too, Adam, is trying to get them, because they have been some of the ones that have, have really been hurt and not been able to receive any of the assistance that's been out there. And so possibly to have that, to have, have some support for them. And the other thought that, in following up with Supervisor Crocker, was I also was thinking that maybe it's not enough on the, on the business support side, and, and just was going to suggest that maybe we all consider 10 million instead of 5 million, 2 million per district, and then, you know, if it has to come back, somebody has to come back if we don't get the applications or they, or it's not spent, but I'm kind of thinking that would be spent, and especially, maybe a thought would be, if we could just have, instead of one amount, maybe we could have two amounts, just on the application of checks, say, do you want 5,000 or 10,000? Or maybe say, if you're an independent contractor or a nonprofit, you can get up to 5,000, and then businesses, 10,000. Maybe we could have two that we, that we, just a suggestion, and then we could go up to 2 million per district. And my thought was that, that's, that leaves 4.1 million for the other community support that's been proposed in the plan, and that we could take about 1.9 from our contingencies to bring it back to six. So we'd have 10 and six, so we'd have 16 in there, leaving 3.1 million in contingencies. That was kind of a thought to maybe make the math add up, and obviously it leaves us a little bit less cushion on contingency, but, boy, the way we're going to have to spend it so quickly will probably, that probably should be enough. And then, so those, those were the things that I had in mind, to first chew on.
Thank you. Just a few thoughts that I wanted to throw out, too. I agree with much of what has been brought up already. I did have a couple of questions. I understand one of the limitations being that a business must have been in operation for two full years prior to being able to access this. That's going to weed out, you know, any startups or, you know, younger businesses, and in a hot economy, you would typically have, you know, some startups and different things out there, and they're too hurting right now if they were a newly formed business. So maybe it's just a tax, and someone who has a tax ID number, has the employees, maybe we loosen that restriction a little bit, just because I feel like we're, we're limiting the pool, and we're talking about ways to get this money out and spent quickly. I don't know that we want to overly limit it, so that was one thing that I thought. I agree with the nonprofits. I think that's an important piece of our community that has been left out of various programs that have come out, and I do like the idea of using contingency funds to supplement this program, or maybe add to this program so that we can have a greater impact. Now, look, I do think it is important to come out and say, this is, this is a great plan to assist our local businesses, and this is not something that is mandated or required. I think it's, it's just a really great thing to recognize sectors of our county residents that are hurting because of this pandemic, and so this is a great part, a great effort on the part of the county to really try to assist, and especially those businesses who have not been able to obtain assistance up to this point. I think that's really great. So I would be supportive of the idea that Supervisor Townsend laid out about increasing the amount of money, and, and look, if that money doesn't get spent, well, it's going to flow back anyways, and I'm sure we will find a way to spend it at, at the county. That's, that could be up for debate, it looks like, from Mr. Britt.
Yeah, so Mr. Chairman, thank you. So I would just caution the board that there are still a lot of unknowns in the cost of these services, for example, testing. If we're going to do mobile testing in unincorporated areas, you know, and, you know, testing runs $200, $300 a test, so that would then shrink the ability to do mobile testing. It would also shrink the ability to, we probably wouldn't be able to support the healthcare sector. So there would be some trade-offs in this plan by increasing $10 million to small businesses, just, you know, putting it on the table for discussion, because, you know, that's a, you know, it doesn't feel like a big amount in 48.9, but when, when there's, when there's already a lot of expenses that have occurred, and a lot of healthcare sector, hospitals, you know, a lot of people have already incurred a lot of expenses, that, you know, that sort of also limits that pool, although I totally agree with some of the comments in terms of, you know, increasing the business size, or perhaps including the nonprofits. Those are things that I think easily can be done, but I just wanted to put it on there for sort of just the board's consideration that, you know, that may severely limit some of those other activities.
No, I think that's a good point, but those were just a few of my thoughts, and then, you know, at the end, we will come up with some very, after we all share our comments, we can come up with the specific list of any changes or amendments that we want to get to. Supervisor Chucklin?
Yeah, I again, support the businesses. I think from what we heard from the very beginning of this shutdown was the economy and how it's hurt our, our local businesses. I would like to wait and see how many applications you get before we commit, you know, double the amount, the contingency will be there, should we say, wow, we're getting a lot, let's add another million or two to this. But I, and I definitely support the nonprofits, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind seeing, maybe keeping the 5 million for the, the private and independent businesses, and maybe taking part of that contingency, you know, 500,000, and make it strictly for nonprofits. But at this time, I would, I would be cautious in committing, you know, $10 million, all of the contingency, I'd rather wait and see, you know, what starts rolling in, and if then we need to take from the contingency.
Okay, Supervisor Valero.
All right, well, I also want to affirm my commitment on several things that my colleagues have said, so that they are aware as well. I do support nonprofits, being able to utilize some of these funds to support their organizations and the work that they do, the hard work that they do day in and day out, but I also agree with Chucklin in terms of maybe a set aside for these funds to support the nonprofits and maybe not coming directly from the, the 5 million that has already been secured for, or for the small businesses. I also agree with Chairman, Chairman Vanderpoel with regards to doing away with the two full year of operation prior to March 19. I think that we have lots of startups that are struggling right off the bat. Their American dream has been kind of shattered because they haven't been able to reach that next level, and so with this support, it shows that the county is fully vested in that. So I would do away with the two full years of operation prior. I also agree to the independent contractors, being able to have a stake in this as well, and then also to concur with my colleague Crocker, Supervisor Crocker, in terms of increasing the number of employees, size per business, so looking at whether it is 10, 15, 20. But I too am a little hesitant right now to use an additional amount. I think we need to really understand maybe the first week, how many applications are coming in, and then as the need occurs, then we continue to pour in that money due to the overwhelming need within our communities. So that is where I stand on this as well. And then also just to share, my, I do come from a small business family. My mom has a beauty salon, and my mom also runs a restaurant, and she hasn't applied for anything, any type of service, and so she's struggling. And so it just goes to show that there are those individuals that have these small employees, our restaurant, maybe what, five, six employees, and then the beauty salon herself, so there are a lot of people like my mom that still haven't tapped into the resources of the state or the federal.
Thank you. Supervisor Townsend.
Yeah, good, good discussion. We're all hitting a lot of the, a lot of the same points. I just wanted to clarify that what I, one of the things I was talking about when using some of the contingencies would still leave 3.1 million in contingencies. I was thinking about taking 1.9 from there in the, in what I was, in the scratching I was doing over here. And then the thing about, like, I wouldn't, I would, wouldn't have a problem with waiting for those first applications to roll in, and then leaving the contingency, as long as we knew that the contingency would be for those other businesses that came in, that it would be available for them. The one thing I have a concern about that is if we're only doing two weeks, we go through the first week, then we evaluate, then we've got to push out the information back to the businesses to say, hey, we've just extended it, you know, we've extended the amount, and you've got one week now to turn it in, so I'm wondering if that'll be too much of a burden, where if we just pulled some from the contingencies, as I mentioned, we'd already have it there, and we can get it back if it's not, if it's not spent. But I'm thinking if we do the things that a couple of others have suggested about maybe increasing the businesses of up, you know, up to 20, let's just say, and if we add nonprofits, independent contractors, even if we do it at a lower level, that we'll probably easily have those many applications, I guess. That was it.
Supervisor Chucklin.
I have two questions now, just clarification, Dennis, so the contingency is 5 billion, and so we're going, so where would you get the other?
So I was going to take 1.9 from that, from the, from five, and that would leave, that would leave the 3.1 in it.
Right.
And, yeah, so, and then the other is just coming from, from the overall, in that community support is just shifting it, so we have six.
Right.
And 10, so it'd be a total of 16.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
As opposed to 9.1 for everything other than business, it would be 10 for business and six for everything other than business. And I would think, I mean, if we want to drill down into that, I would really think that some of those, some of those that we've line itemed on there have other funding support mechanisms that maybe we wouldn't really use much out of there, but healthcare would be one that we'd probably concentrate on, because they've been really impacted.
Okay, that wasn't my question, that was just, came up as he was talking.
That was clarification.
I mean, it was a question, but it came up since he was talking. Adam, would you say most businesses in Tulare County with less than 10 people are local folks, independent folks?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, there are, you certainly get a lot of retail that can be at times, but those aren't, when we look at the businesses in Tulare County, you know, that's, that's not what we largely see. If you, if, I've, I've broken down, and again, data's uneven, but it's what you would think. I mean, it's, it's actually, it's what you would think in terms of the salons and the small gyms and things like that, but it's also small physician offices, dentist offices, attorney offices, accounting offices, a lot of those office, small offices.
Right.
Construction contractors, one, the one or two people, you start to see these, these things bubble up, something that I would expect if you include nonprofits that are, would be included there, religious organizations, you know, the, the small churches and things like that, that are, that, that, you start to see things bubble up when you, when you you start to see things bubble up when you, when you put them in order. And some, you can't really tell because you're not sure where it's coming from in terms of how people cover their own, their own income or own businesses. But, yeah, it's, it's, it's local folks when you're looking at small.
Okay. So, I just want to reiterate again. I mean, I, I think it has been good conversation and good ideas and points. I would still feel more comfortable with keeping it where we're at, maybe taking some from the contingency for nonprofits and just waiting, you know, if we have to add another week to folks, I mean, they have until December. I'm sure people will use it up pretty quick. Based on, you know, like the CAO said, you know, we're just not sure what else we're going to need up there, what's going to come out. I mean, we've, you know, we've spent $2.5 million already, I think, in Tim's report.
Almost three.
Almost $3 million.
Well, three just from HCSA plus probably four for IT.
Yeah. So, costs like that, and again, what we don't know. So, I would, I'm open to adding it at a later time, but I want to commit just that amount tonight. That's my.
My, my suggestion is you, is you guys have your further conversation is I think most of this stuff's achievable, that business size, adjusting that to levels. If we're, if that two levels is more doable than a every increment in between nonprofits. And then in terms of the amount of funding, folks aren't applying based upon the amount of funding. They're applying for the opportunity. The board could always step back and we could plan to come here at the close of the application period and see, how, is it oversubscribed? How oversubscribed is it? And then you're making a decision based upon.
The number we've actually received.
The numbers that are actually there and maybe some discussion with cities about where they can step up and, you know, or if they have an interest in doing that, that kind of thing. But you'll know in retrospect.
And you'll all, you already have the applications as well.
And we'll know it by district and we'll know, we'll know the whole kind of topography of the land on that.
But, so, so I know Jason has some comments as well. But real quick, if that were the approach that were taken, do we need to specify of the $14.1 million that, so the other section within that $14.1 that's non-business, doesn't just gobble up all the money, spend all the money, and then we're left without not an option if this program is oversubscribed? Do we want to even set aside an amount within this until we receive a number of applications? If you follow what I'm saying, to make sure that we're not limiting ourselves or dedicate a little more to contingency? I don't know.
So, Jason, because I'm biased. I only, I only dealing with this part. So, yeah, put it all in.
Maybe put that out there.
The board, so I think based on the feedback tonight, and I think maybe with Adam's input, I think it may, for sort of ease of administration, maybe we, we include nonprofits and for-profits. We increase the number of employees up to 20. We remove the no two full years of operation, but I do think we need to keep in must-have been in business before March 19. Because, again, these are about pre-pandemic businesses being hit. The unpaid or delinquent property taxes and the eligibility of other federal fund has been received are not negotiable. Those are rules of the program. And then I would, I would sort of, sort of, let's maybe make a deal here. Maybe we authorize the CAO to move 2.5 million from contingency for another 500 applications, 100 per supervisor or district if the demand exists.
Yeah. Yep.
And would that, would the nonprofits come from the original $5 million or would there be a separate?
I, I think for ease of administration, we just need to throw them all in. Because it's just going to be difficult to then start separating out. I get the, I get the, the reasons for wanting to do that. But I think maybe, I don't know, maybe that's an Adam question about how easily they think they could do that. But I would just think, the simpler we can make the guidelines and the easier and the more mainstream we can do things, the quicker, faster, more, we have, we have a higher opportunity and chance of actually spending the money and getting it into the economy and to the businesses' hands.
I agree. Okay, Supervisor Valero?
Yes, so, just to, for clarification, when we're taking out of the contingency, we're not necessarily touching anything else from the proposed community investments, correct? Because there are still lots of great things on the list like our rental and utility assistance program, our food assistance, the homeless, all of that, working with our chamber. So, that is not being touched.
So, thank you for bringing that up, Supervisor Valero. So, essentially, I mean, we'll say 2.5 million from contingency, but the reality is, is we're still in negotiation with a lot of our service providers about how much they realistically can spend. And so, you know.
We may see the amounts change.
Right. So, the change, that's why we present it as a broad category, a broad funding. Because in, in some instances, with all the other programs going along and happening, some of our nonprofits who administer these programs are also sort of strapped with administering their federal programs and state programs and all those other things. So, Health and Human Services Agency has been engaged with a lot of those providers to see how much they can really spend. So, based on those conversations, we may or may not have to take 2.5 million. Maybe the, the better question is just authorize the CAO to add up to 2.5 million for $7.5 million, irrespective of where the money comes from, just depending on the spending of, of the program, if the demand is there. So, again, we're trying to do the plan based on what we realistically think we can spend and get into the hands of the community and to the, what the providers can do. Because whatever, and then also make, make the county entity whole because we have been bearing the brunt of the response costs. And so, that's kind of the idea behind it. I also have, as data is available and we can see where things are, are going, I can bring updates to the board and then, of course, a final report to the board. So, with that, we'll go to the final slide and just request that the board adopt a plan. You've already provided direction to staff on the small business guidelines. Direct the CAO to provide a final expenditure report and approve the necessary budget adjustments per the auditor. I just want to also thank the auditor controller for working along with this because, because we are in a rollover budget, this kind of puts us in a weird spot. So, we wanted to make sure there was at least two of us approving all of these expenditures and making sure that things were on the right path.
Great job, Cass. All right, Chair will entertain direction. Supervisor Townsend has a question, comment?
I just had one, one other, other thing because I think we can move on to that motion. But item, there was two things. One is it mentioned the lottery for the business, for selecting the businesses. Do we need that? Is that just an option we put in there?
We put that in there in case there was more, more than the, it's oversubscribed and then we would have to, how do you pick?
Yeah, exactly. Okay. Okay, that's good enough. And then the other thing was on the item number eight on our plan, or if it's 4A on the PowerPoint, when we approve it, in keeping with the letter of the CARES Act, I would really like to see that read that were revised to attest adherence to the federal guidance and requirements of the CARES Act and delete the remainder of the paragraph just to keep within typical letter of the law for the CARES Act.
Sure. That's fine.
Does that make sense? All right, well, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Do all those items have to be reread that Jason talked about, 2.5? I'm getting a yes from the clerk, so that's a yes. So, I would, I would like to move to approve the item with the following amendments, that we increase the business grants by $2.5 million if needed, that we change from 10 to up to 20 employees per business. The business could have been in, in business for less than a year, but prior to, less than two years, but prior to March 2020, and there will be.
Must have been in existence.
Must have been in existence. And there is a $5,000 and $10,000 option when a business applies.
Just the $5,000.
Huh?
Just the $5,000.
Oh, just five? There was, okay.
So, we could add 500 more applicants?
Oh, we added.
I was thinking having two, two, what I was putting out was to have two line, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting the motion. I'm sorry. But to, I just, just to clarify, it had two line items. One would be for businesses and one would be for independent contractors and nonprofits. 10,000, 5,000.
Can I just interrupt before we move? We do have public comments.
Okay.
Of course.
I'm just trying to get all the, I want to get all the questions and comments first. I know that council has, okay. Madam Clerk, do we have a comment? First, do we have any comment from members of the audience here today? Okay. Do we have phone comment, Madam Clerk?
We do. Thank you for holding. You're now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
Okay. I was trying to get all the. My name is Alena Saldivar. I am a community, I'm from the community of Pixley. First of all, I'd like to thank the board supervisors for giving this opportunity to us and helping us to, oh.
Can you please turn off your audio in the background? Thank you.
Hello?
There you go. Yes, please, go ahead.
Yes. My name is Alena Saldivar. I'm a member of the community of Pixley. Because of the continuing rising unemployment and the end, because of the end of the year unemployment rate break and then the COVID-19, many have been in unemployment for months and paying utility bills, rents and mortgages has continued hardship for them. And add to that, the children being home with limited food supplies. Food banks' resources have quickly depleted and are unable to help families, causing added difficulty in learning due to the lack of nutrition. We haven't been fortunate. We have to have self-help donors water, some, some water, but we are still in need of more. And also, it's difficult because children are at home and we have been depleted, we have depleted our resources at the food banks. And we were fortunate to get water from self-help enterprises, but we're in need of more. And it's difficult for people in the community to get water when they've been barely, if, put food on their tables. And this also causes a hardship in education for children who need to, don't have the nutrition to be able to learn. And it's, parents are just not able to do anything more than they can. I also have a concern that hasn't been brought up in regards to the fact that there is some need of instructional assistance to children, especially those children who have been dependent on after-school programs in order to be able to help them to do their work and stuff. And now they're without, I don't know what this school year will bring us, but I would certainly like to see that that could be addressed in some way soon as possible. I thank you very much for listening to me and thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And also, I'm, okay, bye-bye.
Madam Clerk, are there additional comments?
Yes. Thank you for holding. You're now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
Hello, my name is Char. I work and travel to Visalia, currently trying to move there. I guess the reason I'm calling in is again regarding the CARES funding. And I just wanted to point out that, like, I've been on, like, watching the meeting since the beginning of it and I've been on hold for like 57 minutes. And while I am very clear for the amount of time, which was around like 15 minutes that you all spent for talking about like the very detailed troubleshooting and all of that that you were doing for small businesses, it's the same energy that I expect you all to have for the community investment money that, like, you all have set there. And I think in this whole time, I've only heard one of you talk about that and talk about like the cost of testing and mobile testing and what mobile testing looks like in rural communities. Because in my experience, talking with the folks who I work with, and I work with community members and youth who live in Tulare County, a lot of what I've heard from them is that they haven't been able to have access to these testing sites. And if they do have access to them, which rarely they have access to them because they're so far away and so limited, they're not given appointments for like weeks at hand. And then when they finally do get their appointments, they don't get their test results for like another like seven to 11 business days, which is completely unrealistic for folks who are having to go to work every single day and who are then having to quarantine when they're being tested. So, that's one thing I really wanted to bring up. The other thing I really wanted to bring up is again, like, the very, like, I've looked through your entire website. I've, I've been trying to figure out, like, what are the plans that you all have to really support individuals who do not have businesses, who are working at minimum wage jobs, who don't have many resources, and as the first person was saying, whose resources have been depleted, and support them through this pandemic, right? Because again, I didn't really hear you all talk about any of that and talk about people, just regular people who don't have businesses and like the very harsh realities that they're having to face right now from having to go to work, maybe being sick and not having the ability to get tested, from having to continue to show up in ways where they're putting themselves in harm's way for the sake of this economy, right? Which is then leading to like people's death. And I think on the day, it's like leading to the death of like, like the most vulnerable communities. So, that's another thing I wanted to bring up. And I think the other thing is like, just how my, I, I really want to like hope and hope that you all are like really having the same amount of energy and like troubleshooting the same way that you are doing for like the small businesses and the funding there and put it towards like, again, I think we're a little brought it up, but the.
Can you please wrap up your comments, ma'am? Your time, your time has expired.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. But yeah, so like really putting those resources directly back into the community for rent, utilities and other food resources that folks are needing right now. And thank you.
Thank you. Are there additional comments, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Thank you for holding. You're now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
Good evening. Blanca Escobedo with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. I am happy to hear that the CAO's plan includes housing, utilities, small businesses, food banks, as well as others. Our organization works closely with five unincorporated communities in the county. And during the last four months of the pandemic, their urgent priorities have constantly been housing, including rent and mortgage assistance, utilities, especially electricity costs during these heat waves, PPP, especially for farm workers and essential workers, increased broadband access and infrastructure. That's just a few examples of their priorities. We request that the direct financial assistance for rent, utilities and mortgage, when it's defined, it be accessible and equitable to all residents, all residents in the county, regardless of their documentation status, their language and their geographical location, meaning that residents in rural areas or without internet access are engaged and given an opportunity to learn about the program and apply. Furthermore, due to the nearly expiring eviction moratorium, housing insecurity at this time is very real. We ask that the $14 million to community investment be increased to $20 million and that $5 million are at least directed to rental assistance. We want to prevent the homeless crisis from worsening. And as we go into an economic downturn, rental and mortgage assistance is very important. In regard to the small business grants, we ask and support the county that they make sure the applications and outreach for this grant program are accessible to Black, Indigenous and people of color-owned businesses. And they can do that by using culturally competent and accessible outreach. and accessible outreach, including applications in multiple languages. We also ask that the grant program includes nonprofits as eligible applicants, as there are a lot of nonprofits who provide critical services during this time, such as CSAT, Food Link, and others. Furthermore, we urge that the funding going to the educational support for local businesses includes an enforcement aspect overseen by Health and Human Services. As we have seen with the staggering 6,000-plus cases, individuals and businesses should be held accountable for not following public health orders. It's the responsible thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And Madam Clerk, are there additional comments?
Yes. You're now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
My name, hi, my name is Benjamin Quellos Martinez. I'm here on 892 South Bruce Road in Exeter, actually Tulabill, just east of Exeter.
You can go ahead and make your comments, sir.
On the, on the housing, the housing assistance, the mortgage and rent money, you've got 14.1 going to it. I think we could, we could try to go a little bit higher than that. There's a lot of people that are hurting and their, you know, their payments are way behind. I hate for them to lose their homes, and I would just, I would suggest to kind of bump it up a little bit more. 20 would be nice, even though we could probably go a little higher. Thank you very much, and may God bless you all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there additional?
Yes. You're now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
Okay, this is Karina from Vitalia. And I'm calling because I'm concerned about how you are planning to spend the money that you have received from the CARES funding, or the CARES Act funding. And I just really want to voice that we need to prioritize that money to go to community needs, such as housing, rent, utilities, expenses for folks. Right now, there's folks that don't have income stability, and they are struggling to buy just very basic things like water, or food, or items for their children. And so, I really want to make sure that that funding is going to those things and not just to small businesses or what you're trying to spend the majority of that money to. And then also, I would suggest that if you're not trying to spend money on supporting our community with basic needs, that then you just pass, cancel rent completely right now so that folks can have some type of relief in that sense. Or also, I could suggest that you create a system where folks can get money so that they can stay home and not having to go to work while they're sick, and also, you know, providing more sites for testing as well, or coming up with some way to spend money that will create, like, healthcare to be more accessible for folks at this moment. So, those are all things that are very essential to our communities, that this money could provide relief for them. And instead of just trying to hand money to businesses, that's not, like, the best way to spend that money, in my opinion. I think that there is other ways to prioritize that money and make sure that you're giving the community enough time for input as to how that money's going to be managed as well. And also, there should be, like, a form of accountability to better understand where that money is exactly going and not just at the board meetings. Like, there should be a way that it's all spelled out, like, who's receiving that money, and how is that money being accessible to people as well? Like, how are people going to apply for that money and make sure that, you know, not just wealthy people are accessing that money, but actually, like, folks that are low-income, people of color, Black, Indigenous folks are actually prioritized to make sure that they're getting this money to just get us through this pandemic. So, I'm really concerned as to how you are planning for this, and I will continue to look out for how the Board of Supervisors plans to use that money and make sure that I am going to these meetings to make sure that you're not scamming the community like usual. So, please prioritize where this money is going to, again.
Your time is up, ma'am. Thank you for your comment.
We have one more. You're now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
My name is Gerald Verdusco, 33164 Hawthorne Road, Avon Hill, California, 93235. I'm also on the Majorate Bond Oversight Committee and I'm the Avon Hill Non-Veteran Director. And I'd like to state that, basically, much of these people make a good point, that this money, the majority of it, has been allocated to, say, nonprofits, which are, it could be any business, as long as you don't report it as a 501K and the IRS doesn't recognize you as a 501(c)(3), they will not tax you. So, I mean, this is the way it's going to every business, their own nonprofit, the majority of them. And I suggest you do also define the 501(c)(3)'s and those kinds of businesses, as well as give money to the, like they said, the people that don't have many resources, people that don't know how to access it, like, basically, people here in Avon Hill, many people struggle and they have no clue how to access it. And Mr. Valero has been very helpful with this community. We never had help before. And also, I'd like to say that hopefully the board learned from the first time. I'd like to take the two that voted to, you know, to follow the state mandate, which now they are, which caused many lives and everything, the two that did know who they are, the three that didn't know who they are too. But this could have been avoided. I mean, all you have to do is listen to Dr. Fauci and all these medical experts and your own health department. But I appreciate that, at least you guys are getting back on track, and hopefully we will get out of this mess okay, because it's really bad, especially in small communities like Avon Hill and Seville, always over here. I mean, we're in, people are desperate, and it's bad, and that's why there's so much civil unrest. It all, I mean, it all ends up to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, additional?
You're now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now. Hello?
Hi, I'm just waiting because the comment is still going on.
You can start. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Abigail from the community of Early Mart. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on this item. So, I want to thank the county for your commitment to ensuring that this funding is allocated according to the priorities and the requests of all your constituents, including the small businesses. But, you know, my one request for you all is to really think about the education and enforcement support that's needed in the rural communities. As you guys all know, you know, I'm from the Early Mart Pixley area, and we have a huge breakout in this area right now. Me personally, I know, you know, about 10 people that are currently very sick, and last week, three people that I know personally died. Some of them are from Delano, some are from Early Mart. But this is horrible. It's scary, and it's causing, you know, so much fear with, throughout the communities. And we have to do more to ensure that this stops. And I really believe that if you can help to ensure that small businesses and the, and just the different agencies in the rural communities are enforcing, you know, the orders, so ensuring that small businesses are, their staff is wearing masks, that they have signs requiring masks to go in the stores or in the business, that they're socially distancing, all of these things would really help. You know, there is, it's been said that in the community of Early Mart, this breakout started because one store in particular did not obey orders, and it started with 10 staff that were infected, and who knows how many people that they turned around and infected throughout the day, you know, as they were working, because that store sees hundreds of residents, customers every day. So, again, it would have been something that could have been prevented if they were just following the orders. So, and I hope that you will consider that really there has been a huge lack of education in the smaller communities. And if we really want to get through this, you know, we can give money to the small businesses, we can give, you know, money to nonprofits. But unless we do everything we can to ensure that people stop getting sick, regardless of how you feel about this issue, whether you think it's political or not, I know personally people that have died and that are sick. We have to do whatever we can to stop the spread, and I hope that you will consider really spending extra time and attention on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Madam Clerk, are there additional comments?
Mr. Chair, that concludes public comment.
Okay, I will bring it back to the board for action. Go ahead, Supervisor.
Do I have to start over, Madam Clerk? Okay, I would move that we approve the item with the amendments of an additional 2.5 million dollars if needed, coming from the contingency, that we change the number of employees from 10 to 20, that the two-year timeline of being in business does not need to be in place, but they do have to have been in business prior to March of 2020, and that we add 500 additional applicants, 100 per district?
That would be only assuming if we're staying with the 5,000.
If we're staying with the cap of 5,000 per grant.
Okay, if we're, yeah, and we're staying with the 5,000 cap.
Adding that number of businesses, yeah.
Yes, adding 500 additional applicants, but staying with the $5,000 across the board.
Okay, so that's your motion?
Yes.
This is the second.
All second.
And we have a motion by Supervisor Struckley and a second by Supervisor Valero. Please vote. All right, motion passes 4 to 1 with Supervisor Townsend voting against the motion. All right, that concludes item 13. We will now move on to take up item 14, which is a board member may make a request to staff to have a matter considered for a future agenda. Are there any such requests at today's meeting? Supervisor Valero?
Yes, so I would like to request to send a letter to the Board of Cosmetology to allow nail and hair salons to operate outdoors as a result of a big push to move activities outdoors, and should such business sectors be able to safely do so? This is not a demand, but a request to have such State Department work to address this issue, and I know that other counties across California are doing so already. So, it would just be a request for the Chair to be able to write that letter on behalf of the board.
Are they able, aren't they able to do that now, though? To practice outside?
I think that the guidelines of the Board of Cosmetology still hasn't really said that, but I don't know, I just know that other counties are doing that, but.
We can look into that and then have that item brought back next week even, if that's appropriate. So, thank you for bringing that up, Supervisor. Any additional item from board members? Okay, seeing none, that concludes the open session calendar. Madam Counsel, is there need still for closed session?
No, there's no further need for closed.
Okay, thank you for attending and participating in the Board of Supervisors' evening meeting. Meeting is now adjourned. Have a nice evening. Stay safe and healthy.